Zoning Board of Appeals, when a matter is called, I will be making the call. No one should be speaking while I'm making the call. Everyone should be on mute while I'm making the call. And after I make the call, anyone who's going to be presenting, whether it's the applicant, him or herself, or their agent, at that time, when I'm done speaking, and I say, "Go ahead," or applicant, or if I know who's presenting it, I will say, "Please proceed." You can present your application to us. We have all of your documents in our possession. If you need to share something, you can do that. But we've been able to review your documents because they were in a packet that was delivered to all of our homes on Monday. So hopefully, everything is in. But if you need to show us something, let us know, and we'll do our best to allow that to happen. After the applicant's finished, I will invite people who are in favor of that particular application to speak. Now, some of those people may be on the call-in. That's where you need to make sure we know that you want to speak, and I'll do my best to take you in order and allow you to speak. After I allow people in favor, I will ask if there's anyone that opposes that application, and you will be allowed to speak as well and present your information that you want us to consider. The applicant or his or her agent will then have a chance to rebut or address those comments and opposition. For the applicant or your agent, that is a time to address those comments or in a rebuttal of those comments. It's not a time to restate your application. Now, we're not doing this by video, although a lot of us are in video. We are recording this. So we need to do our best to make sure that we understand the recording and it's clear. Only one person could speak at a time, all right? Anyone who does speak, please give us your name and address so we know who is speaking and what your position is. And please to keep to the point of the zoning board of appeals and what our role is for these particular applications. If you are too far off the point, I will reserve my right as chairman to restrict your comments at any time. However, as I said, I will be very lenient, and I will allow everyone to speak and give you an opportunity to speak. But if you're going too far afield, I will restrict those comments. Applicants and interested persons, you can remain on the call on the line after we complete the public hearing. Because after we complete the public hearing, the board members, five of us, there'll be five for each matter, will be discussing and voting on each application that goes forward today. For an application to be granted, you need a supermajority. You need four out of the five members of the zoning board of appeals to vote in favor of your application. If it's a simple majority, three to two, that means your application has been denied. If a waiver, an application is granted, it's not going to be valid until it's recorded on the land records. Therefore, you need to send or bring a check, I think send now, still, to the town hall, made out to the town of Fairfield, the amount of $60, and make sure it gets into the zoning office department Wednesday or later following this meeting. If you cannot stay after the public hearing and really want to find out, you can call the zoning department tomorrow and find out what happened. Any waiver involving construction, whether it's a new dwelling, an alteration, or an addition, will require an as-built before any issuance of a certificate of zoning compliance or a certificate of occupancy. And just to tell people again, who may have signed on a little bit just recently, on the continued docket number two, which is addressed 90 Mill Hill Road, and number six with an address of 171 Carlin Drive, these are continued docket items. Those are not going forward today. 90 Mill Hill Road was withdrawn without prejudice to refile it, and 171 Carlin Drive is continued to the November hearing. No business on either of those matters will go forward today. I'll call the first matter on our continued docket, and that is 240 South Street, MAP 232, Parcel 211, Petition of Judith L. Chesson for a variance of zoning regulations, Section 5.2.4, to reduce the minimum required street line and sum of two sideline setbacks from 30 feet and 25 feet, currently 30.1 feet and 36.5 feet, proposing 24.6 feet and 20.7 feet. And Section 5.2.5 to increase lot coverage from 20%, currently 17.7%, proposing 25.4%. Permission to construct a one-story addition to connect detached garage and second-floor addition premises, A-zone. And Terry Rizzio, are you presenting this?
Yes, I am chairman. Thank you, chairman. My name is Raymond Rizzio. I'm representing Dr. Robert Chesson and Judy Chesson with regard to the property 240 South Street. I'd like to make it clear for the record that we did modify our plans since the original submittal, and the plans that are in front of you are correct. However, we know with the changes that we made in those plans, we no longer need the sum of the setbacks as a variance. So today, we're before you for two variances. One is for a front setback, Chris, if you can pull up the site plan. One is for a front setback where we would like to do is enclose a front porch. And basically, we're enclosing a porch, a front elevation, in a minute, you may have those in front of you. But let's see, there you go. So this is our site plan. We need to be, rather than be 30 feet, we're going to be 25.4 feet from the, from South Street. It'll also feel much more like that, as you can see where the, you look at South Street, you can see the property line, where the actual paving of the street is, has got to be, you know, seven to 10 feet before you actually hit the property line, and then the house sits back. What we're going to do is currently turn what is a wood kind of decking that's, you put it into, Chris, if you go to the front setback, let's go to the picture of the front of the house. Show you a picture of the front of the house. So we're going to take that, the, if you can see, I'll be sharing this with you in a minute, this is the home. We're going to take the, what is currently, we're going to really upgrade the front facade of the home, not adding much of the waste square footage at all, still keeping it that cape-style look by adding some dormers, and then also... So that's, if you, this is what the house looks now. We're going to add some dormers. We are not moving the front of the house out at all, except to add a covered entryway. And we're going to take what is now currently a wood steps into the house and make it a stone patio before. So Chris, if you can go to the, there you go. So those, all of that will come out, will be replaced by a nice stone front, stone walkway, and a step up into a covered entryway. That'll be open. We would happy to be agree to a condition that the entryway remain open. So Chris, if you can pull up the front elevation, we can show the commission exactly what's happened. So the front entryway will be going out no further, the actual stairs will be going out no further than currently exists now, except that they'll be covered. You have the elevations, we can show the front entryway. So, do you folks have your plans in front of you? You look at the elevations, the front elevation, as you can see, it's a, we have a nice covered entryway. We'll be adding some dormers, some brick, some, a nice stone fireplace to the front, and really bring the house, making it more consistent with the houses that surround it. The house has not had a lot of work done for a number of years. So the Chessons would like to upgrade this house. They don't want to turn it into a McMansion. First, it's probably the total square footage will only be at 2,500 square feet. So one of the things that we run into an issue with, so the front entryway really doesn't change anything from a setback perspective in the appearance from the road because of the large grass area between where the pavement ends and where a prop, give the feeling that it'll be at least 30 feet from the road anyway. And as I said, it's because we're adding nice pillars in a covered area. We don't believe this has any negative impact at all. Our second, our second variant we need is going to be for coverage, and we want to increase our coverage from 20% to 25.4%. If we can go back to the picture, I can show what the root of this issue is. So first of all, the house sits up probably at least 10 feet above grade. Most of the houses there, they're currently big, and are small, these smaller caves and torn down, and people have been building two-car garages with barrages underneath, so taking advantage of the grade. The Chessons thought they could dress this house up, keep it in conformity with the neighborhood, keep it in conformity with what it is, but they had this, still wanted like to keep a two-car garage. If you look at these pictures, the garage is currently two cars, but the two cars, one of the cars sits almost directly behind the house, so only one car to the garage at a time, and it just doesn't make any sense the way this was built. So what the Chessons would like to do is take this down and create a two-car garage, but it's going to be tandem, so it'll be a little longer and a little deeper, and it'll have, so we can go back to the site plan. It's hard to jump around with this versus just moving my boards up and down. I apologize. Back to the site plan. So what you'll see is, what we've done is, we're going to tear down the garage. You'll see at the top of the picture, we're bringing the current, taking the current garage down, bringing the new garage, which is the solid line, not the ex-out line, and bring the garage further from the neighbor. What we'll do is have a tandem garage and then have a master bedroom suite. So because of the property being, the topography of the property is what leads us to being able to get, which is just a reasonable home. If we could, we have to put all, we have to keep, we can't put our garage under the home without really tearing the house down. So we're going to put a tandem garage and have a master bedroom. The Chessons have downsized, they'd like to build a first-floor master bedroom. The first-floor master bedroom, the garage will now be attached to the house, and it'll be a master bedroom that connects to the first floor. So that, as you can see from the back of the property, all right, Chris, first floor. So the first floor now, you'll see the tandem garage, and really, basically, what would have been the other half of the garage is now extended a little deeper and becomes a master bedroom and sweeps in, connects to the back of the home. The beauty of this is, really, no one will see it. It'll look like a one-car garage. We've taken some pictures, if we can show what the landscaping is to the rear. So the landscaping to the rear is very deep. We have, what's also unique about this property is, so the landscaping is very thick, no one will ever see, and we don't need a rear yard setback. But all of this work is being done really behind the home and on the interior, so it doesn't have any negative, and we're pulling the garage further from the neighbor, let's call it, to the north, north's home, so that we basically have put ourselves in a situation where we're not having any impact, we're not going any higher. The issue's in, when these properties sit up very high, to add a full second floor and add additional space, the property look, it starts to look like it's coming out of the ground and towering over the street. They believe they get to keep the quaintness of the home, yet gain the square footage. The house itself is only 200 square feet. So our hardship is due, our topography, we basically have to have our garage, we can't do it underneath without literally tearing the house down because we would need, we don't have room. So it would be to, garage sits not below the home, but basically takes up our coverage, and then having also, trying to not have the property look like it's getting high, having our first-floor master bedroom. Chris, if you can go to the properties next door, you'll see what I mean. So that's the property next door. As you can see, garage is underneath, doesn't take up any of the, any of the coverage, yet it's still the two-car garage. And that house is probably closer to 3,500 square feet. Then the house on the other side, Chris, if you can take a picture, same thing, garage underneath. We don't have room to put our garage in, tearing down the entire home. What you see is, as I put you in those front elevations, you end up with a nice quaint cape, something in keeping with the neighborhood, versus, and it's not as large as the homes that, the new homes that have been built. So but for this topography, which leads us to leave our first master bedroom on the floor and not going higher, and have our garage that can't be built underneath, is what drives our floor area ratio from 20% to 25.4%. We believe these variances cause no negative impact to the neighborhood. We have submitted a petition from all of our neighbors on South Street who have signed. We tried to get in touch with, I believe, Mrs. Sosin, who owns the property behind us. I can, Chris, if you can pull, to give an overhead view. We will have absolutely no impact. Her property fronts on Sasko Hill Road, Chris, if you can show where it is. There's the Sosin House, that fronts all the way up to Sasko Hill Road, and as you can see, the home fronts towards Sasko Hill Road. So we don't, there'll be no negative impact, on fact, on top of the fact that it's probably another 20 feet higher, because you've got to remember, what happens is, above us is Lee Drive, as you go up Old Field Road. And Old Field Road ends before you get to the back of our houses. So we basically back up to the houses on Sasko, which have got to be a good, I want to say 20 feet high, and the fact is, we're also doing a one-story addition. I'd be happy to ask, answer any questions I have. The client took great, great pain and took a lot of time to make these plans work, keep the property in keeping with its neighbors, and but for the topography, we end up in a situation where we need these variances. I'd be happy to answer the questions. We clearly think a hardship's established and warranted in this, in this application.
Thank you, Terry Rizzio. Chris, could you take that off a share so I can see the rest of the board members? Because I only get to see a small panel up top, and I have to move it. All right, does the board have any questions? The shaking head, no. Brian, you have a question?
Just really quick, what I just want to make sure I'm understanding is, it looks like, the way you're setting it up, the majority, the coverage issue is just at the connection, you know?
Well, no, the coverage issue is because we have our, we're putting the master bedroom on the first floor and taking up, and making the garage a tandem garage, so it's a little deeper than the previous garage. But as you can see from that picture, the two-car garage that currently exists, you know, it's hard to get out of that garage without clipping the corner of the house. I'd like to be in the auto repair business or little bumpy business for them getting in and out of that garage on a wintry day. But this makes a lot of sense.
All right, any other questions? Katie? Terry, do you have any questions? No. Okay. All right. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application? Emma Line, is there anyone on the call-in?
I've just unmuted anybody. I don't see anybody trying to speak at this point.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone in opposition? We'll leave it open so they can speak in opposition if they're on call-in. Hearing none? Okay. All right, thank you, Terry Rizzio.
Thank you, chairman. Appreciate your time and effort in going through this.
Next items, number two on the continued docket, 90 Mill Hill Road, as indicated earlier, that has been withdrawn. A second number two on the continued docket, 18 Bloomfield Drive, MAP 44, Parcel 90, petition to Kevin Mueller for variance of the zoning regulations, Section 5.2.4, to reduce the street line setback from 40 feet, currently 8.5 feet, proposing 32.8 feet, and two sideline setbacks from 15 feet, currently 13.8 feet, and 18.4 feet, proposing 9.8 feet and 14.7 feet. And Section 5.2.5 to increase lot coverage and total floor area from 15% and 30%, currently 25.4% and 37.3%, proposing 28% and 41.4%. Permission to construct a two-story and second-floor additions with balcony premises, R3 Zone. I saw Mr. Mueller on before. Are you here?
Yes, sir.
Are you in call-in only?
Yes.
Oh, okay, there, I see it. All right, Kevin, go ahead.
Yes, my name is Kevin Mueller. I'm the owner of 1820 Bloomfield Drive, and I also live at that address currently. I am asking, of course, the board, all the board members know that this particular R3 Zone, there are many areas that are non-conforming to the building requirements. I am asking, I, on the, on the proposal, back in 2018, the existing garage has already been built. What I am asking for is to the right-hand side in back of the garage, which you can't see from the street, it's no, it's not protruding any more closer to the sideline setback, a four-by-12, which will make the living room that much bigger, because as all the board members know, these old Army housing were meant to be very small, just for records and Army personnel. By the time you put your furniture in there, it's very small. So I'm asking for a four-by-12 area there. When I did the garage, I should have connected it to the house, because in the very near future, I'm going to be acquiring a 50, well, he's right now 66 years old, and he's challenged, and they live in North Carolina. I went to Angel Ward High School with Danny, and he's going to be living with me because his sister is, that he's lived with his entire life, and I gave the board members a note notarized by his sister down in North Carolina about Danny's going to be living with me. So he's going to live above the garage that has been finished off already, but he doesn't cook very well, and of course, all I have to do the cooking, and he still doesn't want to be alone, so I'm going to do the breezeway that's going to connect, so I could still have a little bit of a life, to the dormer, the shed dormer, which is in the back of the garage, and connecting to the main house, so Danny could walk across the breezeway into the main house. And of course, we could have dinner together, and I could still have a life. As far as the big addition on 20 Bloomfield Drive, it's the same addition size that I built back in 2014, I believe it was, on my side. I have a very good tenant, but the rooms are so small over there. She's getting married in December, and she would like her fiancee to move in in December. And, but the bedrooms are so small, and there's no closet space. I had mentioned to her that I, because I'm a carpenter, even though my days of carpentry, I'm not a young man anymore, but I still could do it, are getting limited, so this will probably be my last project, putting on an addition for my tenant, because I have a very good, neat tenant, and I would hate to lose her. So that's why I asked for on 20 Bloomfield Drive, so everything's symmetrical. And the garage is already 99% done. I already did, I was built on it, and that came out very clean. So that's, that's my case, presenting to the board.
All right. Thank you, sir. Does the board have any questions for Ms. Mueller? Jane, yes?
Hi. I have, this is a question, the garage is currently an accessory structure, but by connecting it to the house, it's no longer an accessory structure. Is that, am I reading that right?
Yes.
So the setbacks required on that side are setbacks for an accessory structure, they're setbacks for the primary structure. So you're proposing the...
Well, the garage is already... I'm sorry?
I know, but by connecting it, it's no longer an accessory building. It becomes part of your primary structure. So it needs, it, are you asking for a variance for that as well, the side, on that side, where you're currently 2.2 feet off?
Well, no, that breezeway is still going to be 15 feet from the sideline setback, because that's going to be second story only. You're going to be able to walk underneath that.
Right, but the setback, a side setback for the primary structure, yeah, but, but you're proposing 2.2, that's the change.
No, that's only to the garage.
Yeah, but the garage becomes part of your primary structure because you're connecting. So I'm just reading right off of the grid, you know, on your, on your site plan here.
Okay.
I just want to make, just wanted to clarify. So you're, you need a minimum side setback of 15 by the regulations, when you're proposing 2.2?
Yes, ma'am.
The, the call is for, it's 9.8, that's the new structure, Jane.
Okay.
Right, but this, but, but in, but the change, because it's, well, we can talk about this in the executive section, session perhaps, it's a better time to talk about that.
Any other questions? Yep. Katie?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we, yeah, we were asking, I'm seeing if there's more questions. Terry?
No, no questions.
Brian? Oh, okay, he shook his head, no. All right, is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application? And is there anyone opposed? If we could open that up, Emma Line, so they can let us know. Okay, hearing none? Mr. Mueller, thank you. We'll be taking this up when we're in the executive session, okay? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, sir.
Okay, number six on the continued docket, 171 Carlin Drive, that has been continued. Now we're on to the general docket, and the first one is number one, 21 Oxford Place, MAP 283, Parcel 19, petition of George Russell for a variance of zoning regulations, Section 5.2.5, to increase the lot coverage from 20%, currently 22.2%, proposing 23.5%. Permission to construct a rear one-story addition premises, A-zone. And Mr. Catchpole is presenting that, I assume? Gary?
You, hold on. There we go.
Hello?
Yes?
I'm Gary Catchpole. I'm the agent for George Russell, who is the owner. We just bought the house about a year ago. We have an existing single-story sunroom currently there, which creates the 22.2% coverage, and he wants to incorporate that sunroom into the kitchen area and make it a full living area, still a single story. And because we're in the A-zone, we feel we've got a hardship in that respect. But really, it's the same size, I think it's 1.5 feet deep.
All right. And does anyone have any questions for Mr. Catchpole? She shakes the head, no. Katie's shaking, no. Brian's shaking, no. Terry?
No.
Okay. No questions on that. I see that the, I think your comment, sir, is that there's 9,300 square feet required, and the existing conditions are 6,300. Is that accurate of what you just said?
Correct.
All right. Okay, is anyone wish to speak in favor or in opposition to...
All participants are unmuted.
To the 21 Oxford Place? Hearing nothing? Okay, thank you. The hearing is closed. Thank you, Mr. Catchpole.
Thank you.
All participants are muted, and they can unmute themselves.
Number two on the regular docket, 97 Welsh Terrace, MAP 232, Parcel 141, petition of Joseph E. and Susan E. Delco for a variance of the zoning regulations, Section 5.2.5. for a variance of the zoning regulations, section 5.2.5 to increase lot coverage from 30%, currently 33.4% proposing 39% permission to construct a rear deck premises B zone. Peter, are you presenting this?
Attorney Ambrose? All right. Yes, attorney. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Attorney Peter Ambrose. I'm here on behalf of Joseph Delco, who's present with me today.
All right, great. Go ahead, Attorney Ambrose.
Our application is to increase the size of the rear deck on the Delco property. I've submitted plans before the commission which would enhance the existing deck by adding approximately 10 feet by 23 feet to the rear portion of the deck. The hardship in this particular case is that the property is located in a residence district B zone. As the board is aware, the present provisions of the regulations establish the minimum, minimum lot area for this zone is 6,000 square feet. But the applicant's lot is significantly non-conforming due to the extent of the salt marsh on the property. The lot area is approximately 16, 16,743 square feet, but a strict application of the zoning provisions only allow the Delcos to take credit for 5,345 square feet. And this creates a substantial hardship. The property is located at 97 Welsh Terrace. And behind the property is a extensive salt marsh area, which is not included in, in their particular area. The Delcos would like to build a larger deck add to their existing deck as the plans show for several reasons. They, they do have grandchildren and they would like a larger deck to entertain their grandchildren and to spend time, more time outside, especially during these COVID times. The other thing is that it would, the addition of the deck is only seen by two neighbors. And that's the Goodfellows who are 115 Welsh Terrace. And the other neighbor is a Dominic D'Agostino, which is at 81 Welsh Terrace. So the deck can only be seen by those two neighbors. My client has petitioned the neighbors and they've, all the neighbors close by have signed off. They've seen the survey, they've seen the plans and they're satisfied with the plans that my client has submitted. From a legal perspective, I think that the Delcos meet the requirements established by the general statutes. The variance do not substantially affect the comprehensive zoning plan and a strict adherence to the strict letter of the zoning ordinance does cause an unusual hardship unnecessarily carrying out the general provisions of the zoning plans. I submit, the Delcos have had residence of Fairfield all their lives, have lived in this house for approximately 17 years. They're a great, great family, a local family. And again, I think the, because of the amount of the salt marsh on the area, it provides this, this need to apply for a variance.
Thank you, Attorney Ambrose. Does the board have any questions for Attorney Ambrose? Jane, Jane has a question?
I'm just curious, does this have to go before conservation to sign off on this?
No, I've already addressed that with conservation. They don't have a problem with it. Thank you.
Any other questions for Attorney Ambrose?
Nope.
Okay, Terry?
No.
Okay, all right, no further questions. Is there anyone in favor or in opposition
All participants are unmuted.
To 97 Welsh Terrace? Anyone in favor or opposition to that application? All right. Hearing no one. This matter is closed. Thank you, Attorney Ambrose.
Thank you, sir.
All participants are muted and they can unmute themselves.
The next item for us is 716, number three on the regular docket, 716 Riverside Drive, map 139 parcel 276, petition of Cardamist Construction for a variance of the zoning regulations, section 5.2.4 to reduce the street line, sideline, some it's a lot of interference. If if it's not me or Mr. Cardamist, please mute. Okay. Section 5.2.4 to reduce the street line, sideline and some of two sideline setbacks from 30 feet, 7 feet and 25 feet, currently 22 feet, 6.4 feet and 24.5 feet. Proposing 22 feet, 6.4 feet and 24.5 feet in section 5.2.5 to increase the lot coverage and total floor area on 20% and 40%. Currently 32.41% and 26.9% proposing 32.41% and 48.14%. Permission to remove existing dwelling to foundation and construct a new FEMA compliant two and a half story, single-family dwelling premises A zone. Mr. Cardamist, you're presenting this?
I am. I'm Dean Cardamist, owner of Cardamist Construction. We own the property there. I've been in front of the board quite a few times. I've done a bunch of homes on Riverside Drive. This is a small cape that's typical in that area. We were gonna either dormer it out, which was typical, and what we found out was about a foot too low with the new FEMA compliance rules to be a foot of leeway. So a year ago, it would have worked at 11 foot, 2 inches to the top of the first floor. Now you need a foot of leeway. At that point, we don't work with the 45% rule. So if we're gonna raise the house, we want to put a full second floor. So maybe basically take a cape, make it a colonial, finish the third floor, or finish the attic area and add a front porch to the front of the house. So we're, we're basically gonna be right in the same footprint. We may actually keep the first floor, we may not. It, it just may, you know, by the time we jack it up, it may just, you know, pay to just take it down, add a foot to the original foundation and then go from there. So basically, it's, it's gonna be right where the house is today. Or not basically, it's exactly where the house is today. The only difference is gonna be the, the front porch.
All right. And does anyone have any questions for Mr. Cardamist? Ask Jane.
Always, always have to have questions. Do you have attic level?
Yes.
How many, I don't have a floor plan. How many bedrooms are in this house?
It's gonna be, it'll end up four bedrooms, three on the second floor and, you know, basically, you know, there's a large room up on the third floor, which will either be a bedroom or could be sitting room or something of that nature.
Okay, but the footprint, just because, again, I don't have the floor plan, the footprint of the house is it the same as the existing footprint?
Yes.
Except for the front entrance.
Yep, that's it.
And the, and the deck, there's a deck off the back that you don't have.
Yeah, there, there's a deck there now. So I, I mean, it's like a raised patio there. So I think they could put proposed deck.
Okay.
And just to add, you know, I, I'm speaking, you know, I did go to all the neighbors. I did submit all the sign-offs, you know, nobody seems, everybody signed, nobody has a problem with it. The only person I couldn't get to actually sign is the person, when you're looking at the front of the house to the right, that's a renter, you know, they wouldn't sign it. I spoke to the owner numerous times. They were trying to sign virtually. We had a small issue, but you know, she's, you know, there's no opposition, at least anything I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Cardamist? Brian? Katie? Terry?
No, all good.
All right. Now, Emmeline, could you open up? Is there anyone on number three, which is 716 Riverside Drive, that wishes to speak in favor of the application or in opposition? Please let us know. Okay, hearing no one. Mr. Cardamist, thank you very much. That application now hearing is closed.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item that we have is number four. It's 59 Wheeler Park Avenue, map 24 parcel 65, petition of Sylvia Mogavaleko for a variance of the zoning regulations, section 5.2.4 to reduce the street line setback from 40 feet, currently 21 feet, proposing 21 feet. Permission to enclose front porch premises R3 zone. And I know that the applicant is on a call-in. And sorry for probably murdered your name. Sorry about that. Go ahead, Sylvia. 59 Wheeler Park Ave, waiting for your application. Are you there?
Can you not hear her?
No.
Okay.
Kevin, can you hear her?
No.
You could, you can hear her, right, Matt?
I can hear her fine, yes.
Yeah, so can I.
You can't hear her, Kevin? Can anybody else hear her?
I got shakes of the head, no. I, I cannot.
I cannot.
Sylvia, can you try one more time, please?
Sure. My name is Sylvia Mogavaleho. My address is 59 Wheeler Park Ave here in Fairfield. Am I, am I good?
Yes, you're good now. Perfect. Go ahead, Sylvia.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Our house was built in 1940, so the it's already out of, I guess, regulation. Everything is already built, already done within 21 feet because it's, it's an old house. What I was wanting to do was to enclose our front porch with floor-to-ceiling windows. It's an open porch at the moment and have an entrance, since we want to enclose the whole thing, and have an entrance with a storm door. Nothing's gonna change. It's not gonna be bigger or smaller. We do have lots of plants. We're a gardening household and we adopted two rescue cats. And now we can't move the plants in and out for overwintering as we used to because the cats like to eat every plant that's in this house. We try to keep the less hardy ones inside the house, but we'd really like to keep the, the ones that just don't need to be frozen. It wants to prevent frost outside on the porch, so we're not lugging them in and out of the house. My mother is fully disabled. I am partially disabled of the right hip. Carrying and moving heavy things is not very good for either of us. So we would like to make sure we can enclose the plants that are already out on our front porch for the night season and just keep them there all year round, which would be wonderful. So it's, we're not putting walls up or anything. It's just floor-to-ceiling windows and a and a storm door. All of our neighbors signed off on the petition except for 33 Wheeler Park because the gentleman is in California and he has a renter there, so she couldn't sign. But everyone else is in agreement. They know how much we love gardening and I don't, I don't think they're gonna mind at all. And it should be a nice, quick and easy change. It just should be really nice to look at. Everything should be fine as far as I know. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Does the board have any questions for Ms. Mogavaleho? Jane, go ahead.
Yeah, okay, I'm unmuted. I'm just curious, the, the, the floor-to-ceiling thing that you're putting in, those are, you can't open them. There's no ability to put screens or anything in? It's just gonna be glass?
It's gonna be, it wasn't polycarbonate, I'm sorry. The, the gentleman said it's gonna be plexiglass. For right now, if I can make it a little bit thicker, it'd be great. The plants that I have mostly are succulents and cacti. A couple of fruit trees, they're really little. They don't need very much. So if they ever need a cross breeze in the summer or anything, I would just open the storm door that we're gonna have there and the front of the house is in shade, so it's not gonna overpoweringly get hot or disgusting, you know, overheat or anything in there. It should be okay.
Well, actually, that's my next question then. Right now, so you're covering up the bay window? I'm just asking because I'm just curious. You're covering up or enclosing the big window in that space. So is there any other window into that front room? Is it just the one on the side? Or is that not into that room?
Bay windows out the front and there's one on the side. The, that one that's gonna be enclosed is the dining room bay window. There's also a nice window coming out the side of the house, so that's not gonna be closed up at all.
So, okay, so it's, okay, so that whatever that room is, will still have the ability to have a window?
Dining room has an open window.
Oh, okay. All right.
All right, any other questions for Ms. Mogavaleho? Brian, Katie? Okay, Terry?
Go ahead.
No questions, okay?
No questions.
Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor or opposition to 59 Wheeler Park Avenue? Okay, hearing none. That matter is now closed. Thank you, Ms. Mogavaleho. Next item we have is number five, 20 Arrowhead Lane, map 73 parcel 252 and 244, petition of John Zeiss for a variance of zoning regulations, section 5.2.4.3 to reduce the street and rear setbacks for an accessory structure from 50 feet and 40 feet, proposing 22 feet and 21, 22.5 feet and 21.4 feet. Permission to construct a 20-foot by 20-foot deck premises double A zone. And I think, Mr. Gilligan, you're presenting this, correct?
Yes, I'm Jim Gilligan. I live at 33 Melody Court in Fairfield and I'm representing Mr. Zeiss, who is in, in the hospital right at the moment, so. I got picked. He's proposing a 20-by-20-foot deck on a rock ledge going down to the lake because of his heart condition. Because he can't get to the beach that's down there and anything else anymore and he would like just a nice place to sit out there. It's on a cul-de-sac. There are only two other neighbors. They both signed the petition in favor of it. There was one person who didn't up on Rock Major Road behind them and that home is for sale. That's the only signature we didn't get on the petition.
All right.
Yeah, the, the, it's all rock ledge going down. You can see on the, the construction drawings going down to the lake. It's really steep and he can't, cannot negotiate it. He's 77 years old and can't negotiate the rocks.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, Mr. Gilligan, on the board? Jane, yes?
Hi, so a hardship has to be tied to the property, not the owner's personal situation. So can you give me a hardship that conforms to the requirements? Can you offer one up?
Well, the hardship itself is the, the shape of the property right there. I mean, it, it drops almost 15, almost 15 feet into the lake.
So you're saying it's the terrain, the topography is the hardship? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, the topography is. It, it, it's impossible for him to get, you know, get down to the lake or even to enjoy it. It is his property. And he would like to just walk to the end of his driveway and look at the lake.
How did you arrive at the 20-foot by 20-foot size?
The owner did. I, I, that wasn't, he just asked me to present it.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any other questions? Terry?
I'm good.
All right. Okay, it's for Collin. Is there anyone that opposes or wishes to speak in favor of 20 Arrowhead Lane? Okay, no one speaking from Collin. That matter is now closed. Thank you, Mr. Gilligan. Next item we have is number six. For this matter, Jane, if accusing yourself, Daphne, you're sitting on this. And it is 67 Middlebrook Place, map 147 parcel 208, petition of Michael and Jane Nishball for a variance of zoning regulations, section 5.2.4.3 to reduce the street line setback for an accessory structure from 60 feet, proposing 41.5 feet. feet proposing 41.5 feet, permission to construct an open carport premises A zone. Mr. Nishball, you're presenting?
Yes sir, thank you, thank you Chairman, thank you Chairman and thank you the board, I'm going to read from a statement, and if I go too quickly or blur anything, just jump right in, my name is Michael Nishball, owner and resident at 67 Middlebrook Place, we are asking for a variance to install a prefabricated metal and acrylic carport on our existing driveway, we have shown in the drawings and photographs to our neighbors on Middlebrook Place and have received back four signatures, please see the map and the signatures that Matt Decker has received from us, the abutting neighbors behind us on Flowerhouse Drive did not reply, however, our properties are separated by woods and the proposed carport would only be visible from, from either of their, would not be visible from either of their properties. We are asking for the variance based on the following hardships, number one, the property is unusual in that it is located along the Mill River, and one property line is the midway point of the river, although the total property area is 26,550, the area of the land portion of the property is 14,300, which is one feature tied to the unique properties of this parcel. This parcel is located in FEMA flood zone AE, and is, it is alongside the Mill River, there are environmental considerations on the construction that may affect the waterway, we are proposing to install this carport alongside the property line that is farthest from the river. Second, our property is at the end of a cul-de-sac that predates the current zoning and subdivision regs, the pavement of the street does not adhere to the shape of the legal town turnaround and current property line, therefore the existing house is only seven feet from the street, and the existing garage is less than 60 feet from the front property line and 4.4 feet from the side property line. Third, the house and garage were constructed in 1947 and predate the concrete Fairfield zoning regs, on the east side of the house, existing relative positions of the house and garage prevent a car from accessing the second garage bay. Please note that the proposed canopy does not increase the impervious pavement coverage since it is located immediately above existing asphalt driveway. It is also 200 square feet less, less than 200 square feet, so we don't need to obtain a building permit, that's been confirmed. And then finally, we have reviewed this application with conservation, and they have determined that a wetlands permit application is not required because they view this as quote, as of right, activity. Thank you.
Thank you Mr. Nishball, any questions from the board?
I wanted to come up with a really good one, but I couldn't.
Okay, Terry, any question?
No questions.
Okay, as to 67 Middlebrook Place, is there anyone on call in that wishes to oppose or is in favor of that application? All right, hearing none, this hearing on this matter is now closed, thank you Mr. Nishball.
Thank you all.
The next item is number seven, and that is, is Jane back, okay, and that is at 160 Pine Creek Avenue, map two, three, eight, parcel three, six, petition of David Tortorello for a variance of the zoning regulations, section 11.11.2, to reduce the side setback from five feet currently, 5.4 feet proposing 1.2 feet, permission to construct a platform for a standalone generator premises BD zone. And who's presenting that?
Good question Mr. Chairman, I don't see the applicant or his agent from Northeast Generator on the line.
Matt, what's that name, just in case they're in the call in?
You have anybody there on the line?
Sorry, what's the name?
Let me just double check the application real quick.
It says A Riley next to Northeast Generator.
What was the name, sorry?
A Riley.
Oh, right, yeah, that's the email that I sent it to also.
I'm sorry, I don't see anybody on the call in list with that name.
Yeah, I don't either, okay.
Okay, I'll, we'll pass this for now, can you try to email either Tortorello or Riley, just, or get ahold of them? Okay, so we're going to pass, we're going to pass number seven for now, we'll move on to number eight, 42 Craig Court, map one, three, nine, parcel one, nine, petition of Gay Weathered for a variance of zoning regulations, section 5.2.4, to reduce both street line setbacks on a corner lot, the side and rear line setbacks, and an open front porch setback from 22 feet and 30 feet, 7 feet and 30 feet and 12 feet, currently 3.2 feet and 20.5 feet, 1.4 feet and 3.9 feet, proposing 14 feet, 20.4 feet, 5 feet, 6.7 feet and 2 feet for open front porch and stairs, and section 5.2.5, to increase the lot coverage in total floor area from 20% and 40%, currently 49.6% and 44.1%, proposing 42.7% and 73.3% permission to construct a new FEMA compliant two-story, single-family dwelling premises A zone, I think Attorney Crusaden is presenting this?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, good afternoon, for the record, my address is 3 Lafayette Street in Milford, Connecticut, joining me on the call is Jennifer Tierney, the architect, and also my clients, the applicants, who are contract purchasers of the property. The, I'll go over briefly what the hardships are, there's several legal hardships that exist with this lot, the lot is a corner lot, so it has two front yards, the lot is approximately half the size of the lot size that's required in the residence A zone, the lot is also in a FEMA flood zone, which requires elevation of any structure that's, you know, beyond 50% either rehabilitated or rebuilt, so there's at least three legal hardships here. The applicants are proposing a house that is in, you know, harmony with the neighborhood, the, the different, you know, as far as the criteria for granting a hardship, the applicants and the owner had not created this hardship, this lot, and this, I think the house was built in 1917, so this house predated the Fairfield zoning regulations and this zone. So the hardship is not self-created, the hardship's unique to properties in the zone, the residence A zone requires a certain square footage that, at least, excuse me just for a moment, what that is, 9,375 minimum square feet, and this lot has 4,091 square feet, the proposal is to remove this structure and replace it with a fully compliant, FEMA compliant structure, building code compliant structure, the request is not out of harmony with the neighborhood, as I had stated before, and I want to point out, there was a lot of variances that are part of the application, and the, it kind of ties into what I'll talk about very briefly next, but the, the actual increase in any non-conformity is limited to regulation 5.2.5 for this application, so it's the, it's the coverage and it's the floor area ratio, the other variances were actually reducing the non-conformities of the existing structure by pulling the property back in, on one, one part, one yard, it's only half a foot or something, but on another one, it's four or five feet that it's being pulled back, so the point of that, the second point of that is, there's an, there's a legal exception, it's, I call it the Adolphson exception, or there's a string of cases that basically say, an independent form of hardship is a reduction of non-conformities, so there's also another smaller shed or garage structure that's being removed, which is reducing the total building coverage that's being applied for, but it's also folding that space underneath the house that's going to be elevated, I would also like to point out that anybody that would be doing any significant work to this house would have to elevate the structure, I do know that a couple of, we have sign offs from three of the neighbors, two of the neighbors, I'm not sure if they're on the call or not, but Mr. and Mrs. Salerno, and I believe it's Ms. and Mrs. McCracken, who are abutters, had emailed Mr. Decker with some questions, you know, I can answer, I'll try to do my best to answer some of those questions now, there was some questions on clarification about the survey and the property line, we believe that, I mean, the property is an A2 survey, the property survey is an A2 survey by SPAP Bjorkland, it's signed and sealed, the property lines are clearly delineated in our opinion, and they, the, the white wall or the gray stone wall that's being asked about by some of the abutting neighbors is actually on the applicant's property or the owner's property of this 42 Craig Court, so there was another question of whether the applicants would be willing to redesign this project to some extent, I think there was a concern about the rooftop, the rooftop deck, you know, we just heard these concerns in the past day or two when they were, you know, circulating the neighborhood, attempting to obtain some of the neighbor sign offs on the petition, my clients are unfortunately out of state with their son who's just recently had an accident, is in the hospital, so they haven't really, they haven't really had time to, to address or look at whether a redesign is possible, but other than the variances requested, the, the house is not a final design as far as the roof or the, you know, or the roof goes, so there, they have I think spoken with Mrs. Salerno yesterday, they're willing to have, you know, discussions, I think one of the other requests was, could we postpone this hearing, and normally that would be a no-brainer for me to recommend that we do that, unfortunately, without going into too much detail, we're not able to, it would cause a significant negative impact for the applicants based on the contract to purchase the property if we were to extend this another month, so we would like to honor that request, and that would typically be what I would do, but I think that we would do our best to answer any further questions from the commission, if there's any questions for me or the architect, we're happy to answer them, I would be remiss if I didn't point out that the, I think the, the, probably the one that would stick in the commission's mind the most is the floor area ratio request, if that, if this, if this lot was fully sized, compliant with the minimum square footage in the zone, we would be under the, the floor area ratio percentage, so, and that goes directly to the fact that the size of the lot is a legal hardship, so pending your questions, that is our application.
All right, thank you Attorney Crusaden, is there any questions for Attorney Crusaden or Ms. Tierney? Any questions, Terry?
Yeah, no questions by Terry.
Okay, Emily, can you open up? All right, ladies and gentlemen, on call in, we're now hearing number eight, which is 42 Craig Court, is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor or in opposition to that application? Give us your names. Emily, wasn't there someone on that was the one to speak to this?
Yep, there's, I see at least two of the potential speakers who would like to speak, Mr. Salerno as well as Ms. McCracken, I would just ask them to try to speak again.
Sure.
I would say to Emily, let Mr. Salerno speak first.
Was that Ms. McCracken that just spoke?
Could you guys hear me?
So Mr. Salerno could have speak first.
All right, Mrs. Salerno, go ahead, give us your name and address. Name and address, sir.
We're just Salerno, 09 Baldwin Terrace, can you hear me?
Yes.
09 Baldwin Terrace, okay, great, thank you, Attorney Crusaden, I, the, the, one of the main questions really is the placement of the lot, I, I agree with you, the house is in keeping with the spirit of the neighborhood, it's a beautiful design, et cetera, and it would be a welcome addition to the neighborhood in my opinion, the, the question is, I lose a significant piece of my, my view in the backyard, and so hence the questions that I have, and the first one really is about the property line in the front right, near the concrete wall there, and what you had just said was, the concrete wall belongs to the current property owner, and so are we to assume that the monument or pin, and this is what I asked in my statement, is, is the outside of that wall where the five feet begin from the side yard of where that house is to be constructed? There's no, there's no monument or pin on the survey drawing.
If you'd like me to, Mr. Chairman, I can answer that now.
Let me, hold on one second, Mr. Salerno, I understand we're in a difficult situation, especially since the proposed buyers here couldn't be available to answer questions, but your, your comment seems to be you're unsure, you're unsure of where the property line is in relation to your property, so therefore you're unsure up close the building is going to be to yours, is that, because this is not a really place for question and answer of the applicants, this is the place to make your comments either in favor or opposition to something?
Well, I, I mean, I submitted in writing everything, but the attorney didn't address anything on the letter other than it's, it's clear on the drawing, and it's unclear, so I, I'm trying to determine, is the, is the basic, the place where the placement of the the structure going to be from five feet from the outside of that concrete wall, because if it is, then that's a significant loss of our, our view in the backyard, if it's five feet to the north of that wall, then that's a different issue, that, that actually provides a significant, when you twist the drawing and the house, that the structure twists in a, a significant way, and it provides a lot more view, so I'm trying to determine, where is the pin for that house, where is the, you're asking for a?
Just a minute, Mrs. Attorney.
Yeah, so where is it?
Okay, Mr. Salerno, is this the only question you're going to have, because I'd want to do this in an efficient fashion, and like I said, this is not a time for question and answer to the applicant as a staff, but you, I see your concern is the closeness of the building to your property, I understand that, what other questions or comments do you have about the application? I want, I want to answer the wall, I don't want to go, no, no, listen to me, I don't want to go back and forth on this because it's not proper for a hearing, but I want to try my best to answer your concerns about this application.
Who's speaking right now?
It's the chairman, that's who's speaking.
Thank you, sorry, wasn't clear, I'm, I'm not on video or anything, so it's, it's hard to understand.
Well, the chairman, you've heard my voice the entire time.
I don't have any other questions, I don't have any other question based on the, my main question is the placement of the home, and, and that's just unclear based on the survey, and that's what we're trying to determine.
Attorney Crusaden or possibly Ms. Tierney, could you answer the question as to the location of the house vis a vis that stone wall, I understand it to be five feet from the property line based on the map, but might help us if you could answer that, thank you.
Yeah, for the record, Kevin Crusaden, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Salerno, members of the board, yes, it's five feet from the property line, the existing condition survey shows a portion of the house 1.6 feet from the property line, we're actually reducing We're actually reducing that encroachment into the setback and pulling the house back to be five feet from the property line. So the stone wall does not show itself on the plans. Um, it shows itself on the survey. Um, the, the reason for that is probably the plan is to remove that stone wall, but I would say that it, the house is probably, uh, a, a couple of feet off of the stone wall, but five feet from the property line, the proposed house.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Um, did you understand that, Mrs. Salerno?
Yeah, I, I do understand it.
It seems like it's moving further away from your house.
No.
It is, but you know, it's going 32 feet in the air, so it's still a, that's, at the end of the day, that's where, um, things matter.
Mr. Salerno?
I understand. Yes.
Can you hear me? This is Jennifer Tierney talking on the architect. Mr. Salerno, I, I really don't want to take the board's time, but I think part of the confusion, um, is that you have been, you've been looking at the proposed survey, and you don't have a copy of the existing house survey. And, um, I think if we could get that to you, that might be helpful to you.
Thank you.
All right.
So does that mean that the application, the current application is incomplete?
No, no.
No, that, it was, it was all sent to the board. You just didn't get a copy of that. I don't think. I'm not sure.
All right, Ms. McCracken, did you have something?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
I have a lot to say.
Give us a name and address, please.
Okay, yes. There is no, there are no markers for us to appreciate what has been proposed on this property, and I live directly adjacent to the property. And I sent yet again to Mr. Uh, James Wentz, uh, my email with my concerns, uh, to make sure, and he confirmed he had it, and you should have it in your hands too. But there are no property lines for us to understand what this is. There are no markers on the plans to say what is going to happen. This is a very old home. My home is also very old, um, uh, um, adjacent to Mr. Weathered's home, uh, same. We've been here for many, many years. Um, and this is not clearly delineated. And so there is absolutely no opportunity to say, where are we going with this? And it's clearly delineated in the document that I sent. On the drawings, none of the hedges are indicated. The wall is not indicated. The back fence is indicated, but there's no markings on the property or the property line. So I did see surveyors here some time ago, and, uh, their markers are not on that property. So we have no opportunity to understand what is about to go on. And this is very important. I'm sorry, but this is an enormous structure that they are proposing to build, and we are clueless as to what is going to happen on, you know, either side, any side of the margins of these properties. And we all are, uh, nonconforming, mine probably being the most nonconforming property, and I understand that, but this is a very large property next door. There is no hardship here. This is about, you know, lot coverage and about under. And we are not able to understand it, and I've said that in my statement. I hope you will read it yet again. There's a hedge that runs along my property. It is not on the document. The white wall at the front is not on the drawings. We don't know where that really is. The front elevation, the front of the property is not delineated, so we do not know. The other side, the facing side of the property drawing is to the facing beach side, and it says the pavement. There is no pavement. I assume they mean the road. So, you know, we've really been unable in good grace to look at what's being proposed and understand it clearly, and I object to that. I want to know, what, you know, uh, there isn't even a clear indication of what hedge here that I've been trimming on my side for over 20 years, whose property it's on. And Mr. Bill Weathered, who owned the property and now belongs to Gay, is, is, has never been clear, and there are no markers. So they had a re-survey done and did not give us the opportunity to see where they are, and I object to that very strongly. How do you make, you know, how do you propose to do a variance without a property line that's clearly delineated according to a marker? You know, I, I don't want to compete with the prospective owners and have them say, oh, this is what it is. That's not what it is. It is not on those drawings of the plans.
Ms. McCracken, the, Ms. McCracken, Ms. McCracken, Ms. McCracken. This is the chairman.
I hear you.
All right, well, you, you weren't stopping to talk. And so I'm the chairman, and I can't pound a gavel on the video. I, I, Ms. McCracken, I'm talking right now. I'm talking. The chairman is talking.
Who are you?
I'm the chairman. My voice has been, please, when I speak, you should stop speaking. I understand your concern. I appreciate your concern. And I am probably one of the most lenient chairman in any board or commission in town, allowing people to speak. Uh, and I understand, and I think the applicants understand the concern, but the map that they submitted is proper. It does not need to have trees, hedges on it. It needs to show us as a board what they're proposing to do vis a vis the property lines. That's what we're talking about. And the street of the, the edge of the pavement is not always the property line. In fact, it rarely ever is the property line. In fact, sometimes the property line goes into the street. Sometimes property lines go into rivers and bodies of water. So it, it doesn't necessarily have to show all of that. I appreciate that, but we're looking at this based upon the map and information that's presented and all of the board members' familiarity with this particular piece of property. And I think your concern is, how close is it going to be to your property? Am I correct?
My, I'm sorry, didn't hear that last part about my concern about what?
Your concern is how close this building will be to your property, correct?
My concern is about all the property lines not being marked, so none of us have an opportunity to look at what they are.
I can understand that may be a, I understand.
To understand the drawings.
Ms. McCracken, I can understand that may be a concern, but it is only a concern logically in my mind, is you don't know how close it is to your building.
No, it's about my neighbors at the back as well and the front street side.
And let me just ask, Mr. Crusaden, Mr. McCracken, please stop. Let me just ask Mr. Crusaden something. As to, you're familiar, Attorney Crusaden, where Mr. McCracken's property is vis a vis this building, correct?
Correct.
Is the building that you're proposing closer to her, her property or further from her property?
It's further, further from her property.
So the current building is closer to her property line than the proposed building. Is that accurate?
That is accurate.
Not to my mind's eye, sir, I'm sorry, because it doesn't identify what's about to happen to the hedges, like where is the property line?
The property line is.
I'm sorry.
It's identified on maps that are filed in the town hall records.
Yeah.
Do you have any other concerns?
Well, I put all my concerns in writing, and I've said them today, and I don't feel you've listened very well. Thank you for your time.
I, I have. I've read them, and I communicated back to zoning department. Is there anyone else, is there anyone else in opposition to this application?
Um, you know, Tom, it's, it's a slippery slope, though. You're putting a lot of pressure on the moderator. Before, there were people saying the moderator's got to have a role as a fact checker. Now the moderator's got to have a role as, uh, controlling mics here. I, I don't know if that's the way to go. You know?
It's a terrible idea.
And it is a tough, tough job to moderate one of these meetings.
What, what's that? Who's that?
That was Mr. Muller's TV.
Chairman, yeah, um, Mr. Muller became unmuted by mistake, so I just muted him again.
All right, I thought someone was.
Sorry. Yeah, I did too for a second.
Someone was complaining about the, uh, the moderator. Uh, I guess that would be Mr. Decker, because it's not me.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Um, there's, there's quite a few people on the line, but I'm not quite certain if any of them also want to speak to this matter. There's one person who's particularly noisy on the line, so I'm gonna unmute him, and then if you could ask again, please.
Sure, thank you. This is, uh, this is the chairman for Zoning Board of Appeals. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to 42 Craig Court?
Bob, are you there?
Is there anyone else?
Do you read the documents that we sent?
Who, is that Ms.?
Are the documents we sent read?
Is that Ms. McCracken?
Yes, I was just asking if, if somebody who may not be able to be there at this moment, if whatever they sent to you is being read into the, um, hearing.
It's part of our record. It's part of our record, Ms.
I was about to ask you, um, do you all have the, do you all have the documents that we sent to you?
Yes, Ms. McCracken. It was emailed to every board member today, and it's all part of the record.
Okay, okay.
Anything that you would send in like that, we're creating it and maintaining it as part of the record. Be rest assured, it is part of the record. Is there anyone else that wishes to comment on 42 Craig Court? Okay, hearing none. Attorney Crusaden, I think you might have answered the questions.
All participants are muted, and they can unmute themselves.
If you need to say something further that addresses those comments, please do so. If not, it's up to you.
No, no, thank you.
Okay. All right, this matter has been, uh, closed. Move on to the next one. It's number nine, 101 Robert Lane. Map 177, parcel 12, petition of Catherine Gussen for a variance of the zoning regulations, section 5.2.4, to reduce the street line and rear line setbacks from 30 feet and 30 feet. Currently 20.7 feet and 20.5 feet proposing, proposing, uh, 18.4 feet to the house and 16.2 feet to the open porch, and 15.4 feet and section 5.2.5 to increase lot coverage in total from 20% and 40%. Currently 15.43% and 23.62%, proposing 28.8% and 53.15%. Permission to construct a two-story, second floor and attic addition. Premises a zone. Ms. Gussen, I think you're presenting that. I saw you. They are.
Yep. Good afternoon. Um, I'm Catherine Gussen. I own 3101 Robert Lane. Um, and I guess if you, we can start with the existing conditions. Um, the lot is a very, I guess, irregularly shaped lot. It looks, um, similar to a sail on a boat, uh, in that it doesn't have four full sides. It has, you know, sort of like a piece of pie almost. Um, the existing garage as it sits now is, is already, as it's been explained to me already in the setbacks, it's only 20 something feet, uh, from the property line. The proposed addition on, on that side of the house, um, would really stay in that, in that footprint, um, from the garage to the deck behind it. The proposed addition there, which is, is converting that garage to a family room and converting the deck to a mudroom, um, wouldn't, wouldn't go outside of what's already there. Um, and, you know, propose to have, uh, bedrooms added above that space. Then on the other side of the house, I'm looking to then, um, add a garage and a first floor bedroom. My, um, 77-year-old mother lives with us, and it's, it's getting to a point where the stairs aren't really, um, possible for her any longer, so a first floor room would be needed. And, um, that sort of explains the right-hand side of the addition. Um, I think that the proposed structure really is, is keeping in the harmony of the neighborhood, especially the direction the neighborhood is headed. Lots of large, um, new construction happening in these little streets. Um, I've spoken to the neighbors. I didn't hear anyone having any, um, objections. I didn't hear back from one family. I left the packet with them, and I know that the, uh, husband had been in the hospital, and, uh, I, I didn't press it with them, but everyone else was fine with it. Um, the house is located at the bottom of the road. If you come off of Mill Plain, you head down the hill to the bottom. So there is a pond across the street, and i- if there were any concerns regarding view obstruction, um, that isn't really a legitimate concern in that I'm the lowest set house on, on that, in the area, and everyone behind up towards Mill Plain could, would have an unobstructed view of the pond. Um, I think other than that, I, I, part of the addition is to add a, a home office for myself. I had, um, the reality of heading back to work for me isn't one. I have, I have breast cancer. It's recurred twice in the last seven years. I most likely won't be returning to an office at any point. So I am looking to have a home office built at the house. Um, and other than that, I think it's, it's pretty straightforward. I have a large family, and it's just a matter of getting bedrooms and, um, an office space for myself.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Is, uh, does the board have any questions for Ms. Gussen?
None.
Terry? Any questions, Terry? No questions, right, Terry?
Actually, I, I have a question, actually.
Do you have something?
Yes. Question. Um, what's the nonconformity of your lot?
Um, it's, as it's been explained to me, it's best I know, is that the shape of the lot makes it that I'm already, um, in, in setbacks, so that if I were to, uh, add, add a room over the garage or even try to finish the garage as it sits, I'm already too close to the road, um, as I understand it. I'm already 20 feet, and it's supposed to be 30 or so.
Right, but the lot itself, separate from the house, the lot itself, um, is bigger than what you need in that zone. And it has the 75-foot square, so I don't, I don't understand what the, um, nonconformity is of the property.
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Um, well, that's your, the hardship you're claiming is that the, is the condition of the lot, that it's a nonconforming lot in an irregular shape. But I don't understand the nature of the nonconformance. The hardship has to be, yeah, I know, I'm putting you on the spot, and unfortunately, a hard, a legal hardship for zoning has to do with the property, has not. I mean, I, I feel for your family situation, but that's not a hardship. Um, okay, that's, that's my question.
It's okay. All I know is that just based on the, the positioning and the shape, uh, when the curve of the road, um, the way it sits currently right now, I'm, there, there is an issue with, with setbacks numbers.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, I have no other questions. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor? In favor or in opposition to 101 Robert Lane? That's number nine on our docket. 101 Robert Lane. Okay, hearing no one. Ms. Gussen, thank you very much. That, uh, portion of the hearing is.
Are muted, and they can unmute themselves.
Next item is a number 10, and that is, uh, 113 Roland Road, uh, map 1. and that is 113 Roland Road, map 182, parcel 169, addition of Stuart and Polly Tillman for a variance of the zoning regulations, section 5.2.5, to increase lot coverage from 20%, currently 19.14%, proposing 20.7%. Permission to remove existing garage and rebuild a new one-story, two-car garage. Premises A zone. Tillman, you're on. Thank, go ahead.
Okay. Hi, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, chairman, and thank you, committee members. I am Polly Tillman. I live at 113 Roland Road. We've lived here for close to 35 years. And we are looking to replace our dilapidated and irreparable garage. It's the original garage, so it's a 1930 garage. We did try to get it repaired. We've been told it is unsound and not stable. And when replacing the garage, we obviously have to spend some money, so we'd like to be able to have a garage that can fit two cars. Right now, we can only fit two cars in when we remove the lawnmower, remove the bicycles, and no people are getting in and out of the car. It's very, very tight. So this new garage that we're proposing is actually very much in keeping with the neighborhood, and in fact, smaller than many other garages. And the design is such that it would be in harmony with the neighborhood. We have talked and communicated with all of our aligning neighbors, all five of them, and they've signed it without any problem at all. In fact, they look at it as a bonus, that it will just improve the neighborhood, and we're gonna obviously do it very tastefully. Don't want to take up too much of your time, but I'm here for questions. Oh, and by the way, it's 0.7 over our lot coverage. Again, .7.
All right, any questions, Ms. Tillman? Any questions?
No questions.
No questions? All right, is there anyone that wishes to speak either for or in opposition to 113 Roland Road? Anyone have comments on 113 Roland Road? Hearing none. Thank you. 113 Roland Road is now closed.
And they can unmute themselves.
Number 11, 36 Newman Place, map 28, parcel 500, petition of Christopher A. and Hannah E. Fitchandler for a variance of zoning regulations, section 5.2.4, to reduce the minimum required sideline setback from 7 feet, currently 5.3 feet, proposing 5.5 feet and 16.6 feet, and section 5.2.5 to increase lot coverage in total floor area from 20% and 40%, currently 19.44% and 28.9%. Proposing 23.9% and 42%. Permission to construct a rear one- and two-story addition. Premises A zone. And who is presenting? Newman Place.
That would be TJ Lanis. TJ, you there?
He's there. Mr. Lanis, you ready to present?
Yes, I am.
Oh, okay, I'm looking at you, but you don't see...
You can't hear me?
I can hear you, but I was looking at your video, and I didn't see any movement there. Go ahead, we can hear you, though.
TJ.
Now we cannot hear you. Just try audio instead of video.
TJ.
Mr. Lanis, we're not hearing you.
Let me... I'll call him.
Pull up the Fitchandlers.
TJ.
Yes. Can you...
Okay.
Do you have me...
I can hear you now.
That's a better connection.
There we go.
Okay, thank you very much. Sorry about that.
That's all right.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and committee members. My name is TJ Lanis. I live at 138 Northwood Road in Fairfield. Owner of Lanis Construction, I'm representing Chris and Hannah Fitchandler, who are also with us on the WebEx meeting. Fitchandlers have lived in the home for 20 years. They have two growing children, and the house is busting at the seams. They'd love to stay in the home in the Stratfield neighborhood. We have a pre-existing, nonconforming lot in Zone A, where the minimum required lot size and square are 9,325 square feet and 75 square, respectively. The lot consists of 6,184 square feet and has a lot square of 47. With a compliant lot in the residential A-zone district, our lot coverage would only be 15.8%. With the total floor area, coverage would be 27%. Based on these hardships, we respectfully request the board to approve our application. As provided in your packets, all abutting neighbors have reviewed and approved of the proposed plans. I would also like to state that in August of 2010, the property located at 28 Newman Place, which is next door to the Fitchandlers, applied for and was granted a variance to also increase their lot coverage. With that said, the Fitchandlers feel that their proposed addition would have zero impact on the neighborhood.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lanis. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Lanis? And I know his clients, their customers are right with him, because we're on their video.
Correct. My iPad failed.
Any questions? Jane, did you have a question? Oh, okay, sorry. All right, Brian, no. Katie, no. Terry?
No questions.
Okay. For 36 Newman Place, is there anyone on call-in? For 36 Newman Place, anyone on call-in that wants to speak to that in for or in opposition? Okay, hearing none. All right. Thank you, Mr. Lanis.
Thank you for your time.
Next item is number 12, 375 Winnipeg Drive, map 73, parcel 171, petition of Linda and Daniel Terrell for a variance of the zoning regulations, section 6.3.3, to reduce the minimum required number of years for an accessory apartment from five years, proposing zero years. Permission to construct an addition over existing garage and create an accessory apartment. Premises R3 Zone. I think I saw Mr. Terrell yesterday. You are, sir, go ahead.
Good afternoon, chairman and members of the board. My name is Daniel Terrell, owner of 375 Winnipeg Drive. We'd like to add a 600-square-foot accessory in-law apartment above our existing garage. My in-laws are... My mother-in-law is 68, and my father-in-law is 73. She has degenerative arthritis and mobility issues, and she does not drive. My father-in-law is a heart attack survivor with heart problems. And last year, he had a car accident, and he lost mobility in his right wrist, and he has driving restrictions. My wife is a cardiac care nurse, and she's a sole caregiver. And we also have three small kids that she also has to take care of. My neighbors on both sides of us that abut us have seen the plans, and they agreed to it, and they signed off, as well as my neighbor across the street. We're in a cul-de-sac, so he looks directly at our house, and he has signed as well. The addition keeps with the standard in the same type of neighborhood. It keeps with the style houses within the neighborhood. I'd have to say the hardship in this case is not having enough room within the house to do this addition for them, as well as the lack of affordable housing to get for them in the immediate area. That's it.
All right. Thank you, sir. Does anyone have any questions? Yes, Jane?
Hi. Other than the need to reduce to zero time period, is the design otherwise compliant with all the other requirements for an accessory apartment?
Yes, yes, it's compliant with all other requirements. Also is compliant with wetlands. They've already signed off.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, Ms. Terrell? Brian, Katie, Terry?
No questions.
Okay. All right. Is there anyone that wishes to speak?
All participants are unmuted.
Anyone that wishes to speak as to 375 Winnipeg Drive in for or against? Hearing none, Ms. Terrell. Thank you very much. Number 12, hearing has been closed.
All participants are muted, and they can unmute themselves.
I'd like to call back. Number seven, 160 Pine Creek Avenue. Mr. Torrello or Riley on that application on the call?
Mr. Chairman, I spoke to...
All participants are unmuted.
I spoke to the property owner and advised him that his agent was not on the meeting. And I resent the sign-in information, and he was going to reach out to his agent as well. And I reached out, so I got no answer on the phone call. So if they're not on the line, I would just say if you're okay to continue them until next month, and I'll make sure that... Or at least, my best to make sure that they're available.
Yep. Yeah, we'll continue that. It's a generator application. Hopefully, we don't lose power in the next 30 to 40 days. And also, we'll be unhappy customers of that. So we'll continue the number seven, 160 Pine Creek Avenue to the November hearing. And board members, please keep that in your information. So the October 1, 2020 Zoning Board of Appeals has now come to conclusion. Does the board need a quick break, or can we go into working session? Okay, I see a roll of the hand. Let's move forward. And Terry wasn't asked.
No.
Okay, let's take them up in order. Continued docket, number one. And everyone else, please mute yourself. I only want the board members to be unmuted when we have a discussion. First matter, 240 South Street, the Chessens. Attorney Rizzio presented that. It's to construct a one-story addition, connect the detached garage and second-floor addition. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Who did that, Brian?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Terry's seconded. Okay, discussion.
I think the second go-around project that was submitted is a great improvement over the first one, so I think it's good.
Yeah, they tightened it up and made it work by making the garage a little bit deeper, so...
Yeah, that's fine.
It's good to work with the neighbors. All right, let's bring this to a vote. Jane?
Jane says yes.
Katie? I see that you're mouthing yes, but you're muted, so...
You got unmuted, Katie.
Unmuted.
Yeah, my screen is messed up.
There you go, we can do it.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Terry? Brian?
Yes.
And I say yes, that motion passes? Number two was withdrawn. It's number two, 90 Mill Hill Road. The second number two, 18 Bloomfield Drive, Mr. Muller's application, which is to construct second-story, second-floor addition with balcony. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Brian, is there a second?
Second.
Terry's seconded. Discussion? Jane, is where we had the question on that sideline setback.
Right, so now it's no longer an accessory building, so it's... They're asking for 2.2 when 15 is required. I think that's a stretch. And, you know, I know the personal situation, you know, again, I understand, but that's not our charge.
Looking at the call, we have it at 9.8, because that's the new part of the addition. So Matt, do we convert this to a 2.2, or...
Mr. Chairman, the garage was granted a variance a few years back for a setback requirement of 2.2 feet, which is why the... There is no sum in the R3 district for multiple sidelines. And it was of the office opinion that he did not need to reapply for a side setback for the garage, but for just the new portion of the work that he was proposing to do, which is why I did not write it up to include that, Jane.
But so, but by connecting the two structures and creating habitable space above, does that change the nature of it?
The garage is not getting any larger. The only portion of the addition is in the back of the garage that connects the house to the garage. The setback of the 2.2 was already granted. Whether it was passed to the house or not, would still require a variance to 2.2 feet.
I know what you're thinking, Jane.
Because the garage didn't change in size or in use, it was not deemed that he needed to apply for that again.
But isn't the use changing, because now it's habitable space above it?
It had habitable space above it before. And it does not... It was a garage on the first floor, and he had a finished loft above it for the bathroom. He had a half-bath in there, and... Or a full bath, I think, and an office.
Okay, thank you.
I know what you're thinking, Jane, because we've had situations where they've had an accessory structure, and they connected them.
Right.
Where the accessory structure in prior met those zoning requirements, because they're less. But then, when they connected it, they had to, you know, get a new variance, because it now became part of the main structure.
Right.
In those situations, we had not provided a variance for that accessory structure. So they already had a variance for this garage of 2.2.
Okay.
So, you know, kind of, you know, it... Your logic is right on. Because normally, we would be looking at it that way. And I think the zoning department would have made them get a variance if it was busted the fact that it already... If it didn't have a variance for the accessory structure.
Okay.
I agree, that is correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Any other discussion? I mean, these are always difficult groupings of properties, so... You know, the whole area tends to be a hardship, in my opinion, for the way they set these lots up and the structures onto these lots. So, I mean, I think, you know, as long as we're reasonable, I think we could allow these.
Yeah.
All right. Jane?
Jane says yes.
Katie? Terry?
Terry says yes.
Brian?
Yes.
I say yes. That passes. Number six on the continued docket that has been continued to November. Number one on the general docket, 21 Oxford Place. Number one on the general docket, 21 Oxford Place. It's petition of Mr. Russell, Mr. Senator, who presented that it's to construct a rear one-story addition. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Brian's on a roll. Anyone second that?
Jane seconds. I beat you, Terry.
I will, I will, as always, offer to remove myself from the.
No problem.
All right, discussion on the Oxford Place.
I find it reasonable.
Yeah.
Yeah, you go from 9,300 down to 6,100.
I never even knew that street existed. It's kind of amazing.
All right, bring it to a vote, Jane.
Jane says yes.
Katie?
Katie says yes.
Terry?
Terry says yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I say yes. That has passed. Number two, 97 Welsh Terrace, petition of the Delcos and Attorney Ambrose presented this. It's to construct the rear deck premises B zone. Entertain a motion to approve.
Jane moves to approve.
It was Brian's motion. Is there a second to Brian's motion?
Jane seconds.
Thank you, Jane. Okay. Putting the new deck, expanding.
Yeah.
I see no problem with it.
No.
The one where the guy wants to have a place to go outside and see the water, right?
It's the marsh.
Oh, the marsh.
The marsh. As long as, you know, conservation doesn't issue, I think it's fine. And can I just point something out? I lived in this house when I first moved back to Fairfield 28 years ago.
Okay, so I won't ask you if you always wanted to have a larger deck on the back. I won't ask that question.
The house was smaller. At the time, the house was much smaller.
Okay. All right, let's bring it to a vote. Jane?
Jane says yes.
Katie?
Katie says yes.
Terry?
Terry says yes.
Brian?
Yes.
I say yes. Terry's. Number three, 716 Riverside Drive, Cardamas Construction, Dean Cardamas presented the application. It's to remove an existing dwelling on Riverside and a new FEMA compliant two-and-a-half-story dwelling. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
I had moved. Is there a second?
Katie seconds.
Thank you. All right, discussion.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Jane.
Just a general statement. This is a brand-new house. I mean, I know it's taking the same footprint, but it's a brand-new designed property. Why couldn't it have been designed to be within the 40%? I mean, it's just a, you know, redesign it. So it does need a variance. You know, it's like, we push the envelope and we push the envelope and we let all of these things slide and then we end up with giant houses on small properties. Observation, I don't know if anybody agrees with me.
I think the, I think the main thing to me is that the only extension of the property, according to him, was that little front, was the front porch. They hadn't yet decided in construction whether they were going to fully remove the structure or use the front or use at least three sides of the elevation. So if they're only extending that little covered front porch, I really don't have a problem with it.
What I'm talking about is the volume of the house, the.
Making it two floors.
The FAR, the volume. The house is big. The bulk of it is bigger than what's permitted.
What's the total square footage, do we know, in that house?
What's that?
We know what the total square footage in the house is and I can figure it out.
I have all my stuff upside down.
So they're at.
Do math here.
It's about 2,300.
That's not a big house for that neighborhood.
4,300?
No.
No, I'm just, but I'm just saying in general, you know, we put, we look at the slide that are beyond that cutoff point of the FAR, the 40% or whatever it is in the zone.
That's 40%, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, but I think we got to consider both the, the total square footage, which, you know, if it's, we're talking, if this was 48%, it was a, you know, 3,500, 4,000, 5,000 square foot home. Yeah, make it, make it, go back to 40%.
Okay, thank you.
I agree.
All right, bring it to a vote. Jane?
I'll say yes.
Katie?
Katie says yes.
Terry?
Terry says yes.
Brian?
Brian says yes.
I say yes. That passes. Number four is 59 Wither Park Avenue. Sylvia Magraveno presented the application. She wants to enclose the front porch. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Jane, that was your motion. I'll be giving you that, Jane. Is there a second? Brian seconds. Discussion?
I think the concept is fine, but I'm just hoping that this gets run by the building department for a permit. Because certain requirements for when you have glass far down to the floor, that they may want to think about.
Yeah. I'm sure they, hopefully they will.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, for the benefit of whoever.
Eventually they're going to have to take it down. All right, bring it to a vote. Jane?
Jane says yes.
Katie?
Katie says yes.
Terry?
Terry says yes.
Brian?
Yes.
I say yes. Number five, 20 Arrowhead Lane, Mr. Gillarin presented this, Princess Ice. This is to construct a 20-by-20 deck. Brian, this is what you were referring to before. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Jane seconds.
Thank you. Okay, discussion.
Well, I use out hardship that was tied to the property, so that, it makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, you can't put a patio on that topography.
Right, right. You know, we're hearing a lot of presentations that have to do with family situations and that's just not our charge.
Bring it to a vote. Jane?
Jane says yes.
Katie says yes.
Terry?
Terry says yes.
Brian?
Brian says yes.
I say yes. That pass. Number six, Daphne Yaron?
Yes.
Okay. It's 67 Middlebrook Place, petition of Michael and Jane Nispel, and that's for the, construct the open carport. Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Daphne, right on it. Thank you. Is there a second? Brian seconds. All right, discussion.
I don't know, looks fine to me. My, the only question I was going to ask, I couldn't come up with a good one, was is the structure going to be bolted to the house? But that really doesn't matter.
They had it bolted down to the asphalt. My question was going to be whether the Volvo, the Volvo in the picture was going to come with the carport, but I didn't want to ask that either.
I wanted to know what color it was.
All right, bring it to a vote. Daphne, can you go first and vote?
Yes, and yes.
Okay. Katie?
Katie says yes.
Terry?
Terry says yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I say yes. That passes.
Thank you very much. And that's not a Volvo on the driveway.
Thank you, Daphne. Okay, number seven, 160 Pine Creek Avenue, that has been continued. Number eight, 42 Craig Court, petition of Gay Leatherhead, Attorney Crusaden presented this, and we also heard some comments and questions about it as well. And this is to construct a FEMA-compliant two-story, single-family dwelling. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Okay, Brian, is there a second? Is there a second?
Jane seconds.
Thank you, Jane. Okay, discussion.
The gentleman who presented said this was not a final, so I'm not sure how we can even discuss it.
I think he said it was a final design, but they were open if the, if there had been concerns or they were able to be reached for concerns, but they were willing to submit this as a final design. That was my impression.
Well, final design for some of the aesthetic things is one thing, but final design for setbacks and lot coverage and floor area ratio, i- it's final or they're not going to comply if it's, if it's granted.
Okay.
I think the final design thing was that there were some questions about that, that roof deck, which, you know, if, there's not a variance that's tied to that piece of it. It fits within the variances they're seeking and it, and it fits. But let's, let's discuss. I understand some of the neighbors' concerns, but it, the house is moving away from the property lines. I mean, they're reducing the, the big, the big things were, you know, whether those lot coverage and floor area ratio were the ones, because the setbacks were all being reductions and non-conformities, which is always a positive, which is always what we want. So, which gives them another argument as to helping create a hardship. You know, I wrote the notes, it's like, you know, you look at the floor area ratio, but, you know, this is not a big house. Or, you know, just in general for that, for that area.
I think that that's true and that's the trend that's down there, but I don't think it's a good trend. I think these are, these houses that are going up are just too big and they're creating a canyon effect in all these little streets. And the other comment I have is the driveway, the area to park between the property line and the face of the house is only 15 feet deep, and that's not even the depth of a parking space. So the, any car that's parked there, as a guest, is going to be hanging out over the property line.
I'm not clear as to whether the neighbors are objecting or just couldn't get their questions answered. We, no?
There was, they didn't state an objection other than a lack of information. That's all I heard.
That's what it sounded like.
Well, they didn't know where it was so they could visualize it exactly. And I tried to make it clear as I could to, that you know where the house is and you know where your house is, and this is moving further away from your house.
Right. I think it sounded like a view, it sounded like a second-story view was the concern from at least one of them. And again, I didn't say objective, I just said the question.
Yeah, he actually seemed to really like the design.
When you comply with FEMA, you're going to ruin someone's second-story view.
Yeah, I know. I get it.
And they have to comply with FEMA. Any other discussion?
I understood his question. It's actually, the way that the attorney explained it, I think he's actually going to end up improving that gentleman's view. Because it wasn't towards the wall, it was going the other way.
Ready for a vote? All right, Jane?
Jane says no.
Katie?
Katie says yes.
Terry?
Terry says yes.
Brian?
Yes.
I say yes. Number nine, 101 Robert Lane, Ms. Gussen presented her own application. It's to second-story, second-floor and attic additions. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
That was Terry, wasn't it?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Terry. Is there a second?
Jane seconds.
Thank you. Discussion?
Okay. There, I don't see any hardship. The property is bigger than what's needed. There's a 75 foot square on the property. And I think going from a limit of, a maximum floor area of 40%, pushing it to 53.15 is just, you know, beyond what's, what's acceptable to me, anyway. And again, you know, I feel for families that need more space, but I think this is a little big. I think they could compromise and get what they need and keep it within the limits of the regulations. There's no hardship.
Yeah, the, the way they phrased it, the way they phrase it, you're, you're correct, in my opinion. But as to these, a lot of these setbacks, they do have a hardship. When they're going straight up, they, they can't comply because they're already within the setback, the way that this, that sail-like, you know, is a setback, but, you know, it's whether, how much do we want to give on the floor area ratio is the way I look at this one.
But the addition, the addition is also, the, you know, brand-new construction is also in setback. That doesn't have to be. That's a choice. That's a design choice.
I know. It's just what, what we want to give them. I looked at this as the FAR was the question of how much we give them as an FAR.
Is there a, what, 13%? Is it 13% over?
Yeah, they're 13. That's a big number.
Yeah. It's a big house. It's a very big house.
So what are your thoughts?
I think it can be redesigned to comply with the regulations because there's no hardship tied to the property. It's just what somebody wants, but you don't always get what you want. To be blunt. I mean, does that, do any of you see a hardship that I'm not seeing? For the new, the portion of the house that's new construction?
Any comments? We could have people other than Jane and myself talking.
I mean, is, no, seriously, are there, are there any other, are we allowed, are we allowed, are we allowed to grant a variance because this, to compelling use of the house versus?
Our, but that's not our charge.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, versus a legitimate hardship.
It's not our charge, but it's within our purview, not to grant or deny.
Yeah, it's in our, it's in our purview to grant or deny. We're supposed to find a hardship that allows us to.
That exists. It's a hardship.
Otherwise, it's subject to reversal on appeal.
Right. But she also has the approval from the neighbors.
Right.
It would be unlikely that it would be appealed if the neighbors aren't in approval.
Neighbors judge their neighbors.
Mm-hmm.
Well, they have, they have to live next door to these, to the families for the next, you know, year or more, so.
I mean, I.
She has one, two, three, one, two, three, four, five.
Six bedrooms.
Five, five neighbors on Robert, they're all saying, okay.
Right.
My opinion, I think this is, it's a little too much for a large property to, for the FAR. I'm not necessarily, for this property would be hard to fasten, hold them to 40%, but this one is, I agree. I agree with Jane. This one, it's, it's too big of a jump for this property.
Yeah.
I'm nearing it.
Bring it to a vote. Jane?
Jane says no.
Katie?
Katie says no.
Terry?
Terry says no.
Brian?
I'm going to be the nice guy and say yes.
It's that baby.
Terry says no. Terry says no.
You're thinking back in our resubmit plans, right, for a small one?
I mean, yeah, exactly.
Yes. Which they will.
It might be more amenable, it may not have to be the exact, but, you know, just may have to be exact 40%, but at least closer to that.
Yeah.
It was my Groucho Marx moment, nothing should ever be an...
Number 10, 113 Roland Road. Petition to Tillman, variance for existing garage, rebuild a new one. The owner presented this. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is that Terry again, or was that Brian?
Kate, that's Kate.
Okay, thank you, Terry. Second?
Jane says yes.
Thank Jane. All right, discussion.
Very reasonable, it fits within the neighborhood.
Right.
Katie and I know that one.
They maintain the side setback for the garage.
It's less than a percent over coverage.
Right, right.
Let's bring it to a vote, Jane.
Jane says yes.
Katie?
Katie says yes.
Terry?
Terry says yes.
Brian?
I mean, Brian says yes.
Yes. For me, that passes. Number 11, 36 Newman Place. Petition to the pitch handlers. Mr. Lenys presented the application to construct a rear one- and two-story addition. Entertain a motion to approve.
Jane moves to approve.
Thank you, Jane. Thank you, Jane. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. Discussion.
It's only slightly over the percentages for coverage and FAR, so.
I'm good with it.
Yeah, and they consider that this is a 9,300 requirement, and it's 6,100 or just under 6,200 is different than the one we just talked about.
Yeah.
With an increase of FAR, and it's actually consistent with an earlier one. I know we don't go to be consistent, but, you know, for the concept, it having a, what is it, 2% increase is reasonable for that size reduction, reduction in size lot. Bring it to a vote, Jane.
Jane says yes.
Katie?
Katie says yes.
Terry?
Terry says yes.
Brian? Okay, I say yes. Number 12, 375 Winnebago Drive. Terrell's application to accessory apartment. They need to reduce the required years so they can build that accessory apartment from five years to a zero. Entertain a motion to approve.
Jane moves to approve.
Okay, Brian?
Hi, Jane.
Second?
Jane seconds.
Thank you. Okay, discussion.
Three apartments. We need diversity in housing in Fairfield.
Yeah, I mean, I'm familiar with the Lake Hills area and all the little turnarounds in there and, you know. You know, it's hard to expand existing. You've got to find the level spot that you can expand to. And makes sense on that. Bring it to a vote, Jane.
Jane says yes.
Katie says yes.
Katie, thank you. Terry?
Terry says yes.
Brian?
Brian says yes.
And I say yes. That motion passes. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. It looks like we'll be doing this in this fashion again in November. So thank you for your patience, and we'll see you in November. Hope everyone stays safe and healthy. Hello, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Josephine. Bye.
Thank you.